For us being late, it's time to be comfortable. We have your question. We have the agenda review session. So we have a group of minutes. We have a public hearing. We have no audiences to serve. We have audiences of first reading. We have an audience for amendments and right general audiences of this area. This is to add. We have the cap person location on ADA 122 Street to locations. And we have organs number two, organs to establish fees for stormwater adjustment policy application. We have resolutions one through thirty. Approval method, number one, approve agenda amendments. Number two, approval payment. Three, authorized vehicles for the D tax sales certificates. Four, approve twenty twenty five city council release schedule. Five, approve authorization to advertise for Jones Avenue and the Mansory building system improvements. Six, approve relaxation of the city's most important request that I would want to create constantly in. Seven, approve use of performance guarantees for deposit to Alejandro Perez Malin. Eight, approval amendment of resolution zero four two four one four with John Delphic Hill Company. Nine, approval amendment of resolution zero eight two three five five with Mike McDonald Group in doing business as Mr. Mike McDonald, AOC. Ten, approve authorization to advertise for CCF twenty eighteen water main replacement project, Summer Street from Myron to Lewis Street. Eleven, approval amendment of resolution zero six two seven four, regardless of giving you group at ALC. Twelve, authorized purchase by police department in the New Jersey State contract from Lutner for the safety group in. Thirteen, authorized acceptance of donation for market foundations. Fourteen, chapter one fifty nine for the insertion for twenty twenty four county line circulation. Fifteen, resolution authorizing the cancellation of twenty twenty four taxes for two sixty nine power street. Sixteen, approve authorization to advertise for Brokers Village Water Main Replacement Project. Seventeen, approve chapter one fifty nine for the insertion for the twenty twenty four label preservation grant. Eighteen, approve authorization to advertise for New Jersey Avenue Water Main Improvement Project. Nineteen, authorized purchase by the police department in the New Jersey Star contract for MicroStrategy giving. Twenty, resolution to establish an adjustment policy, Madam, and application for stormwater need to be fees. Twenty one, approval request for street closing requested by carriage of the destination micro fellows. Twenty two, approval request for this city property requested by the government tomorrow. Twenty three, approval request for boarding street closure and use of city property requested by Brokers University recreation. Twenty four, approval amendment of resolution five zero one two four sixty with Holland, Dogma, Randoms, and Tuxedo. Twenty five, approval amendment of resolution zero twenty two five fifty one with Underground E2B Corporation. Twenty six, authorized application and execution of grant agreement twenty twenty five law for freight impact fund with New Jersey Department of Transportation for home news road and financial road improvements. Twenty seven, approval amendment of resolution zero six two four sixty five with guidance statement that. Twenty eight, approval amendment of resolution zero six two four sixty six with guidance statement that. Twenty nine, approved person to person and place to place transfer of license, visa pocket, to four thirty six Main Street, ALC, trading as Casa de Agassi. And thirty, approve of grand funds to build a brand associates for thirty nine affordable housing units at seventy five New Jersey Street. They did not advise for discussion by council, will be comment based to the members and council within the review session on December fourth, two four five thirty, following the city council meeting. Now the meetings.
Councilmember Castaneda is absent. Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gaskins is absent. Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Here.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Council President Escobar.
Here.
Please be advised that the notice of open public meeting act has been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice which gave official notice of the silent place encountered of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate opening board in city hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Report. The House of Commons.
Act like allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight I would like to dedicate a moment of silence to in honor of Donald Boling. Daddy passed away on November ninth. He was a pillar and an agent of change in our community for many years through the work that he did as a police officer, as a chief of community relations, and also as the work that he did with the student liaison outreach team he created with our New Brunswick students. Donald only exemplified the true meaning of community service and activism in our city. His legacy continues to be present in the countless of lives that he touched and especially the students that he mentored, who became part of the fabric of our city. Especially some of them are working in our community. A lot of them are working for the city, for the county government, and also in our schools. So may he rest in peace. Thank you. Second.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. Madam Chair, has the correspondence been addressed to the public performance?
Yes, Council President, the correspondence received by the City Park's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. So we have a public hearing. Mr. Shami, you lead this part of the meeting. This is in reference to a distance waiver application for four thirty six Main Street, ALC, trading as Casa de Agassi, with license number twelve fourteen, thirty eight zero zero six eight.
Yes, Madam Council President, Madam Council. On tonight's agenda is a public hearing, which is required under our revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter five point zero eight point one sixty. It's an application for exemption, distance restrictions in connection with the transfer of this license into the location known as three seventy eight George Street. With respect to this particular application, the licensee, the applicant, has submitted the appropriate paperwork with respect to the transfer, the application, as well as the intentions with respect to the use of that particular location with the liquor license to be transferred. The application states that it will be an Italian restaurant, needing the requirements of the distance restriction waiver under our ordinance, but the ordinance requires a public hearing. I would suggest that perhaps representative of the applicant or the applicant, him or herself, come forward, just give the council thirty second overlay of what's proposed for that particular location. And then, Madam Council President, if you could open up the public hearing in questions, objections, comments, et cetera.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Alberto Mulyone.
So if you could tell us a little bit of why is the proposed plan that you have?
So yes, I wanna, we wanna build like an Italian restaurant, authentic, like as we have already one in Metatchen. So we wanna bring like Italy to New Brunswick with authentic food, authentic like, all authentic products, the service, of course. And that's it.
So any member of the council have any questions before we move into any comments? So does any member of the public have any comments or have any questions?
Questions.
About this proposed? Do you just sit here just in case so the public can tell if they have any questions? Absolutely.
Good evening.
I have a seat. May I sit?
Good evening, Council Charlie Crowe of New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I guess I'm just a little confused about why it's a place-to-place transfer? Is it, the liquor license has always been at three seventy eight George Street and will continue to be? Am I correct about that?
No, actually that particular license was taken out of that location into what I'm called pocket. So when that occurs, there's no license in that particular establishment and you have to actually have a person-to-person and place-to-place transfer, which is why we need this waiver, because an actual license does not sit in that location anymore.
Got it. So it's put in pocket and now it's just coming back to the same location it was before.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, well, that's all I have. I wish you well. We love you. Thank you.
Anybody else want to probably wish us through, have any questions?
Yes, Daniel Moore, due to where my, well, my question was just answered. And then, a question that I have, due to where with this license coming in, is there, what is the time limit? Due to where with this, with some of the bars, due to where they have different time on it?
This is a restaurant, so Mr. Shami, do you know the time?
The license establishment will operate under the same guidelines as contained in our ordinance with respect to the closure and opening of way for licensed establishments. So as a restaurant, perhaps it can close earlier, but legally, under our ordinance, they can stay open until two AM.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Any more questions from the public at this time? So at this time, I would like to take a motion to close the public hearing. Vouch.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
This particular matter, yes, listed on the consent agenda, the resolution for transfer and granting of a waiver for this agenda is inside of number twenty nine. And beyond consent, thank you.
So we have audiences of first reading. We have organs one, one, two for both one and organs two amendments and right general audiences of the City of New Brunswick, ten, because of the fact that we got per, parking, this is parking spaces, we have the person, we are adding two locations at ADA, I mean, two spaces at ADA one two two Street.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December fourth, at five thirty PM, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. We have organs one, one, two, four, oh, two, and organs to establish fees for stormwater adjustment policy application.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, December fourth, five thirty PM, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
We have resolutions one through thirty. Before we open the door for any kinds of questions, if any of my fellow councilmembers have any questions on the resolutions at this time. I have a few that I would like to, number ten, Mr. Wallace, if you could.
Yes, Madam. Council President, yes, that is the, a project we had designed back in twenty eighteen. It's been sitting on the shelf. So we dusted that off. It's between Lewis Street and Mile Run. Water main there is undersized. There have been some, some large main breaks. The, the plan is to lay a large main there and then eventually bring that over towards Van Dyke so that we have a transmission main that runs east-westish across the city instead of all of the north-south.
Thank you. Then, resolution twelve and nineteen, Councilwoman.
Sure, Council President. Number twelve is made necessary by the fact that our duty weapon that we've used some generation or another since roughly two thousand and six is no longer made by Sig Sauer, leaving us to have to come up with another suitable option for our city police officers. So our range staff settle on the box, and that's what that purchase is for. Nineteen, same answer. It's our department server, and it's at the end of its life, no longer supported. Can no longer get maintenance or parts. Five minutes.
Thank you. Then, number twenty six, Mr. Valenti.
Yes, Madam Council President. This is a, this is just an authorization to apply for another grant from the DOT. In this case, it's some freight impact fund. We're asking for permission to apply for redoing both Triangle Road and Home News Road.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, I mean, if you could talk a little bit about number twenty?
Sure. So the same law that allowed the city to create the stormwater utility also requires that the city put in place a credit policy manual or adjustment policy. So this resolution will put in place that policy along with the application guidelines, specifics as to how you apply for the credit, the term of the credit, what you have to do to maintain any kind of stormwater mitigation in order to keep the credit, and then those types of things. That's what this policy will do.
Thank you. And lastly, number thirty, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Council President. As you may recall, I think it came up at the last meeting or I mean, before, the Hockney Pavilion, now known as the Grand Commons Project over on Nielsen Street, sixty-six units of affordable housing, senior housing that has been back and forth for some time. They are closing on their financing, on their financing next month, should be breaking ground quarter one next year. This is the city's portion of subsidy that will be contributing to the development of those units.
Thank you. So at this time, if we're gonna open the door for the public, so if any member of the public have any comments or any questions on the resolutions, please come forward. You have one time up, five minutes.
Hi, Daniel Moore, I'm gonna start with number thirty. First, I, I have, is there a waiting, a waiting list or a first come, first served?
What's the resolution of some of these?
Thirty, were we just talking about the four, thirty-nine affordable housing units? So it is first come, first served, or do you have to be put on a list for something for these affordable housing?
Council President, well, one, it's senior housing, and secondly, to senior affordable housing. And secondly, to the best of my knowledge, this is handled through the county's continuum repair process, and people are funneled through that process into available affordable housing units that are applicable to that.
Okay, that's great. For twenty-two, I see something over there with a morning apartment. Now, for the past two months, I never did get an answer. Well, you plan on having two over there at nighttime? I asked, did the city ever do something with the rodent situation over there, with rats running around over there and over to Walgreens?
Well, at this time, this is in terms of the resolution for the Christmas tree lighting. I think that we could not delay it on giving.
You keep saying that it's been two months, you never, but I'm just saying, please, I'll, I put up videos to show all these rats running around over there. What, what, like I said, what, a rat has twelve babies every other month? Please, why would you want people to come over there? What, what, and obviously, due to where, you, you already answered my question, but this has been two months ago when I, my suggested this, due to where, what, and you, and not, not taken care of? What kind of, what kind of council members are really, are, are you?
I know, just to get into the, I, I understand what you're saying, I agree with you, but this is a specific about New Brunswick, we're requesting to do a community event there and a holiday tree lighting.
And good, I know what it's for, but like I said, wow, you see a crowd of rats just running around. I don't think it's good for you to invite someone to, to the area. Like I said, it's been over two months that I spoke on this matter. Due to where, why to walk through there, unable to film, film them, due to where, you can tell the difference where people are feeding them because they're not scared of you, for me to just stand there and record them. But like I said, I know majority, you don't take anything that I say, what goes through one ear and out the other. Then, that's where fourteen, with these swimming lessons, due to where, who are these four? And this?
This is for the New Brunswick students.
Also, say, I'll say, hi. Okay, well, like I said, still good to see, I do see the buses going down for the swimming lessons. I would congratulate the county on that, due to where that is a great lesson, that lesson, since those two kids drowned down in the river. It's good to see the county and then the mayor and others still, still giving free, free swimming lessons to the kids. And then, would you dare to tell me, number ten, when, how long will this, when, what you do start it, about how will this project take, take place?
So Wallace, I can go through the, what are they, a replacement project, Summer Street?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't really determined that yet. I haven't gotten any bids back, but probably be a solid six months of work, and then, and then we would let the roads settle for six months before paving.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'd like to talk about number twelve, the purchase of firearms for the police department. Rather than past this, I actually think this could be a great opportunity to phase out weapons with the police department. I think the New Brunswick Police Department has shown that they are lax and judicial and frankly inept. And I would like there to be less guns in our community. I think a great place to start would be the police department. Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk?
Good evening, I'm Charlie Crowe of New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'll start with the final resolution. Of course, glad to see moves to create more affordable housing in the city. But I am interested in the consent order. The resolution speaks of an order from Judge McCloskey, and the order specifically is to utilize excess RCA funds from various municipalities along with funds from Piscataway in order to subsidize thirty-nine minutes in the project. Can somebody explain that, that case, that order?
But it, Mr. Lingus, please, just for explaining that.
Sure. So we, and, Council President, so we reached out to our Affordable Housing Council with McManman, and they connected with the organization Fair Share, who in tandem with our attorney and them, put forward this consent order, which is how the mechanism for this goes, and had the judge sign off on our project to use these excess RCA funds into subsidizing this project for thirty-nine of the units in the project.
I'm not clear on what the role of Piscataway is, though.
That's, that's where the bulk of the RCA excess funds are coming from. And all of the money and all the other towns have their number met, and so all of this money is going toward numbers owed to Piscataway.
So that these were funds that were already paid by Piscataway to New Brunswick back when RCA's were allowed?
Yes.
Got it. Can you tell me how much is that for the city to use after this?
I guess.
I, I have to, I have to ballpark it, but I think something over two and a half million.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I know I've talked to this microphone before and spoken about how those funds should be utilized, so I'm glad to see that they'll be used on this project, and I hope it'll finally happen because I think, you know, for the record, this is a project that's been over a decade in the making. This is replacing a senior housing building that was demolished in twenty-ten. So it's high time that the housing is replaced. Yes, I already spoke about the liquor license. Can I get some information on the neighborhood preservation grant? It's on page three.
Mr. Lingus.
I'd like to know more about what kind of information is required.
What is that, like, specifically, Mr. Crowe, what would you like to know?
Well, what might the money be used for? What neighborhood and what things?
So this, this program is the fourth year of the, our partnership with the Esperanza Project, and we work with them on business training efforts, their own sort of little mini clean team effort, and a few other projects trying to improve the neighborhood in that area.
Well, it sounds like a good thing. I'll just put in a word that we could use some neighborhood assistance and neighborhood preservation in my part of town. I live on City Amp Street near Remson. And yeah, we'd like to see some investment and attention on the second word. Moving on to the resolution for an adjustment policy manual, an application for stormwater utility fees. I appreciate you asking a question about it and getting a little bit of information. I want to note that at this body on May fifteenth, you know, I asked some questions here and was informed that there was a rate study conducted by a firm, I think, Arcadia. Arcadia was the firm that did the rate study, and I filed an open request to get a copy. I was told I can't have it yet, that it's a working document or a draft document. And I want to understand when that document's gonna be made public and how you are able to, you know, set a rate structure and start charging people without making that study, of which you're basing the structure on, public.
Do you have a similar one to take that?
No, I'll be glad to take that. I commented on it in May. And the rate, the study is still in draft form, it's still ongoing. And when it is finalized, it'll be that one two, one two. Is there an estimate of when? Will it be done this year?
No.
It's a brand-new utility statewide. This is a massive undertaking, and that, and that is clearly important, so I don't.
So as soon as we got that ready, that means we're ready, we'll make sure that we announce it here, guys, ready for you, Mr. Crowe, or anyone else who has to see it.
I'll look forward to that day.
Thank you. Anybody else want to probably wish us to adjourn the council on the resolution summary? It's time of the adjournment. Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution, you have a question on?
My question is for number twelve as well. I'm just curious, is this my understanding, am I correct in assuming that they're just replacing firearms? There's not any increased firearms?
My understanding that is replacement, yes.
Correct.
Anybody else from the public? If I will close this part of the meeting, I would like to take a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. There's, I just have a few updates, something required to, my, your thing that I have to put in my, the council wishes to, like, this, on the public, making statements. I just, go ahead.
Just want to wish everyone a happy and peaceful Thanksgiving holiday.
Anybody else? I just want to just, a few comments, a comment and an update. I had the pleasure last night of, you know, the attending the New Brunswick Urban Location Board Meeting where Benny Topiis, one of the board members, retired, he's retired. Yesterday was his last night, was his last day, after twenty-seven years of serving our students and our community. So it was a very excellent activity, excellent reply to him. Twenty-seven years is a long time, and he served as a great advocate for ethics and stories. So congratulations again, obviously retiring. I would ask, Mr. Escobar is here, so if you could give us an update. I know we have a few nights of Code Blue, so if you could give us an update on how things is going.
Thank you, Madam President. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Code Blue season officially began when Code Blue was issued on November ninth. Code Blue was issued twice since then, on November twelfth and thirteenth, bringing the seasons total to three events thus far. Our current capacity at the Warming Center for Code Blue is twenty guests. In preparation for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Code Blue season, the Department of Human and Community Services submitted an application to Middlesex County for one hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars from the Code Blue Support Grant. The amount requested is the same as what we requested and were granted for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four season. The funds are used for staffing and operational support of the city's Warming Center located at eighty-one Remson Avenue, Unity Square, which includes cleaning, janitorial services, as well as laundry services. This month, the department added one additional part-time staff member, bringing our Code Blue and Dignity Center staff to five personnel. Having the fifth person provides relief if someone calls out for Code Blue and lessens the occasions when a staff member ends the overnight shift at the Warming Center and then reports directly to the Dignity Center the following morning. Separate from our Code Blue operation, the Dignity Center, the shower facilities located at Memorial Stadium, which operates Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, eight-thirty AM to ten-thirty AM. Wednesdays, and Fridays, 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. and 12 noon to 2 p.m., continues to function with donations of essentials like hygiene products, towels, and clothing. In particular, the department would like to recognize New Brunswick's Progressive Lodge 17 and the Jewish Federation of Central Jersey Dignity Grows Project for their generosity. Over a period of months, the Progressive Lodge has made several donations of bath linen and soap. And the Jewish Federation donated close to 1,000 hygiene kits. Looking forward, the department would like to acquire a clothes washer and dryer, which would be used to support Dignity Center operations, as well as meet a small segment of community needs. The department is in the process of drafting guidelines for the use of the laundry equipment, which would be placed at the Recreation Center on Joyce Kilmer Avenue.
Thank you for the update. Any questions?
Thank you for the work. I'm looking forward to another successful Code Blue. This is one of the programs that I wish we didn't have for this needed. So in the meantime, I'm grateful that we provide the services to those in-house and in the public. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. If I may, I would like to recognize we couldn't do it without the support of council. We certainly couldn't do it without the support of administration and public property. So without their support, it would not be possible. I'd like to thank them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, I just want to wish everybody, you know, next week is Thanksgiving. So I wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Hopefully you get to enjoy it with your families. At this time, we are getting ready for the public portion of the meeting. Just a reminder, this is a public comment. You have up to five minutes. Line time up. Is there any question or answer here for the comments? Any member of the public wishes to address the council at this time and have a comment, please come forth.
Good evening once again, Council. Charlie Cradell, New Brunswick. Today, I want to start by saying rest in peace to Gonzalo Napoleon Hezpedes Perezas, the victim of the murder, 23-year-old man killed in the streets of New Brunswick on November 6. And I wanted to ask if this was a random killing? Was this victim known to the alleged killers? Or was this a random counter?
Captain Hoover, are you able to answer that question? I mean, I pretty sure this is on the investigation, right?
You're correct, Councilor. Other investigation.
Okay, because I know the police department put out a joint statement with the prosecutor's office saying that it was not a random act, but the assistant prosecutor on the case told the judge it was, quote, "just a random situation." So those two things don't square, and I'm also investigating to try to get to the bottom of that. But very concerned, this is the third murder this year in New Brunswick. In March, you might remember, Dumie Simmons was shot and killed in the second ward. On October 13th, Oscar Sanchez was murdered also in the second ward. Both of those crimes, are they still unsolved, both of those other murders?
Captain Hoover, do you have an update on those two specific ones? I know there have been some other, I'm gonna test it on the investigation. Do we have any updates on those two incidents?
No, I don't. Mr. Cradell will send me him up. I'm sure he gets every detail he's available.
Thank you. Also concerned over the weekend, shortly after midnight on the 15th into the 16th, there was apparently a hit and run or pedestrian was struck by a vehicle at Jersey and Handy. Can you tell me who's leading the investigation? Is it the police or the prosecutors?
In the intersections, is it the New Brunswick Police or the?
The New Brunswick Police.
Okay, because this morning, the prosecutor's office told me New Brunswick Police are the lead agency. Just a couple hours ago, Captain Shaw got back to me and told me MCPo is the lead agency. Obviously, both things cannot be true. And I'm concerned because if both entities think the other one is the lead agency, who is actually leading it? And why haven't the authorities asked for the public's help in solving this hit and run? Perhaps there's a description of the vehicle. Perhaps there's, you know, awareness that could benefit the investigation. But I only knew about this because somebody posted on Facebook about it. And I was able to confirm that, yes, it did occur. I don't even know if the pedestrian that was struck survived or not. Do we know that at least they survived?
Are you able to answer that question, Captain Hoover? This is the prosecutor's office case.
Yeah, my delivery is speaking on the seat. So I would have your questions to the prosecutor's.
Okay, I'll continue to look into this. But I think, you know, we brought up before, we traffic safety, in particular pedestrians are very vulnerable here. And yeah, we can't be normalizing this stuff. We need to talk about it. And, you know, we should certainly be looking for any drivers that are hitting people and running away. I also raised some of these questions at a crime watch meeting this week and didn't get any substantive response. I know at this microphone, April made a request of, for a representative of the police department to give a robust and proactive update on the department's activity. Do you have any plans to make that happen?
Well, I, like I said, I agree with somebody. If you have Captain Hoover here, we need to do an update when necessary, when asked. I didn't do it and I haven't done it because we are reorganizing this council in January. So that might be something that whoever is president can take action on, right? But I think you said having Captain Hoover here is in terms of, like I told April when she said, in terms of any education, can face any safety, anything, I think is worthwhile for them to do, like, or we report some of those things. So make sure that whoever is the next president of the council, remind them of that. If that's something that they are willing to do, because I think it's worthwhile. With any other, like we do with anybody else.
Yeah, I don't see any reason it can't happen at the December, one of the December meetings. We've had two unsolved murders, another murder, a hit and run.
Well, I didn't give information about that because we already that.
Well, I had to guess for it. Just make one more point.
Make it clear.
Okay. You said in reference that you don't think it's proper to give statistics. You said, quote, "crime reports that they have to do." You can get that through the state on the website. Where?
The state, I know that there's a crime report website that the state has. And I believe that we are requiring the police department to send that information. They really want to. And we have a map, there used to be a, the map, the website that indicated some incident is also part of that. And it was in the city website.
I know the map, but the statistics, where can I get them?
Well, the statistic is right there, right? The statistic is the state because they have to report that to the state. So they say uniform, have to remind uniform crime report, is it called?
Yes and no.
Your question.
There's a form of UCR in the time. It's not an easy question to answer right now.
So what they said, the uniform crime report, I know that they have at the end, it usually said big report that they do in all throughout the state.
Federal reporting is, oh, where? Where do I get it? That's all I need to know.
The state. I'll get you the information. Besides, I use it for my work and all the stuff. So I get you the.
Great. Now, thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Canning. I'm from City Amp Street. I'd like to address the council about the Code Blue program. So I, you know, hearing the report, it seems that it's only going to have spots for 20 people and you're keeping the same allocation to that program. Last year, it was, every year, people die of exposure here in New Brunswick, right? And when you make structural choices to not fund programs that save lives, people die, right? So I'm very, very disappointed in the city council for not allocating more money to Code Blue and also not addressing the consistent concerns of the public that many of our homeless population cannot get information about when Code Blue is open because they do not have access to the phone, right? So you guys are failing. Do better, please. Also, I'd like to make a comment about how the city council has been addressing members of the public over time. One of the things that I have noticed is a tendency to interrupt, to be rude, particularly to black and brown members of the public, right? That's not right. You should sit, you should listen. That's your job, right? You should speak to every member of the public with respect. And that goes to all you city officials as well. I heard you guys sniffering, sniffling and laughing, right, at people who are members of the public. That's not right. We are members of the public. You all work for us. Thank you very much.
Hi, Daniel Moore. Please, I would like to thank you because honestly, a few others on Facebook saw, especially Escobar, because he disrespects me at all times. But like I said, I'm trying to, I'm not going to speak tonight. I'm on my heart. You try to make me out of the devil. But how many times have I proven to you? With the Lord blessing me for what I do, from helping others, helping me, like I said, where what, once I told you I did not get the same amount of income anymore. Wow, I haven't had to pay the blessing out of the past seven months that I haven't even had to pay P S E N G. I told you I had a credit of $616.97 last year. A credit this month of $577,055. The Lord blesses me because I'm not the one that the devil, a lot of you and only one person I'm not talking to you who were pretty good, my only one that I really trust up there. But I'm going to move on. So Council Ludwig, by any chance that you investigated back in 2022, saying my phone was on tracker, that you investigate with these three white vehicles, which one is my neighbor, who New Brunswick Police Department has following, following me, due to where what? I just spent $600 on two new phones. Why didn't I change my number? Because I'm not no damn criminal, like I said. Now, I'm going to move on. As I said, I'm going to speak on it. It's a cartoon, but this is true. It's called the spark tree. It's a little teenager where she goes where, from a globe, seeing what she has to do to help others. And then one, each time when she does her job, just like I just told you, if you Google it, it's about 10 minutes. And like I said, the spark tree, due to where what? I proved to you several times, a lot of you, I do have special vision, due to where I see visions, the Lord will need me to someone helping, and then due to where I can't stop it. Some are bad, some are good. What's good is I make sure that it happens. Due to where New Brunswick on French Street swabbing down, I'm just sitting there with a group of drunk men. Instead, at the last month, realizing I was standing there watching my brother, keeping an eye on him, where he has drinking problems. Did the Lord answer my prayers? What? To, like I said, if you can't distract yourself, get away from your location. He was put in wrong way due to where he's nowhere near a liquor store. How many people due to where New Brunswick Police Department keep thinking I'm doing something else? How many people have I got away from victim far? Due to where what? Get away from here. If you want to get clean, it's not about due to where, wow, if the person wants to get clean, or if the person is grown, if you leave the horse to the water, you can't make them drink. But if you're the right person to talk to a person, it will, it will work. And like I said, every time the little girl, she, she does her job, what, what she's told to do, a spark would form. And just like I told you, wow, every time I do something helping, even though it's helping me, helping someone else, what did I just tell you? The Lord sends me my blessing down. And then due to where what? Now, the next one I'm working on, how what I spoke against Mr. Dean, I do to where with this house, but why am I helping Mr. Dean so much? Due to where to get out of this house now? Wow, because the Lord is showing me, he keeps collapsing in here. I do not want to go in this house and find him dead. That's what I'm working on, Mr. Dean. Just like, wow, several times, just like what? Where what? When I moved to Berthwaite Terrace, he has this stressful dealing with someone drinking. I went to with my mom. I moved, signed a lease, due to where what? I kept saying my, I said, seeing my mother going to collapse, no one to be there for her? Wow, for the lady just to come out in a blue, saying, here's your money, your security deposit back, you're free to go. When I said, oh, I made a deal. It wasn't with Berthwaite Terrace Apartments. It was with the man above, where I was about to turn in the papers to keep those inspectors. But for, come on, this hasn't been inspected? He said, no, this woman just helped save your mother's life. Like I said, for things to just pop up out of nowhere, when I need a helping hand, it'll fall down to me. Well, I've been to the doctor's health issues, due to I'm helping the same thing with my arm, due to where what? They tell me something, I come back, they look at me, they say it's gone. Now, I'm praying, due to where what? I just had my MRI done, due to where what? 10 months. Wow, I'm really scared. What? Due to where they tell me my arm is not damn healed, due to where what? I still can't move my arm. I have to go for an E E M G G, due to where what? No, I'm going to finish. You let everybody else finish. Like I said, I'm going to finish. What? When I remove this ride to show, what? I have no support with my arm. What? When I'm walking, my arm will not even move. Do you know how scared I am? What? They said six to 12 months? What? Now, after I gotta go for E M G, what? To have my damn arm attacked again? What? The New Brunswick even still turning the body cameras? Why? Because I'm not damn guilty of anything. But like I said, all of you devils will have your damn day because I say in my prayers every night because I'm not the devil. Yes, like I said, you better tell that devil to back off of you, due to where, like I said, you give other people free time to speak. Good. You don't want to hear the truth. You don't belong in there.
Thank you. Next speaker?
All right. Last meeting, I had asked if you could get any information as to why all the benches on George Street, especially by the bus stop, have been removed? Just curious to give a follow-up on that.
Want to take that, Mr. Joyce?
The, there are leaning benches in the bus stops on George Street, and there are benches in the bus stops on George Street.
I mean, I feel like it's pretty obvious that the leaning benches aren't really, you know, they're not as comfortable as the normal ones. And I'm just curious why remove the benches? It's supposed to just leave them there. I'm not sure that costs money.
So there's an obligation to maintain those bus stops and so that?
So removing the benches was to maintain the bus stops. Is that what I hear?
Benches were not removed, they were replaced.
It was, so they still mentioned there. It's not the, why was we hoping there's still benches there?
Can I ask why the change, like why the leaning benches as opposed to the normal ones?
Does this answer the question?
That's the one.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council?
I'd like to make a point.
Yes, Mr. Cradell?
I just want to note there were benches across from the Heldrick on George Street, not bus stop. There's one bus stop still there, but bench from there has been removed, and the standalone benches were removed also. What was the point of that?
So I will get that information for the next meeting. Thank you. I just, before we close, I ask for a motion to adjourn. I just, again, happy Thanksgiving. And I just want to make sure, I just wanted you to know that this council has the charge, right, of, we were elected to listen to the people. Absolutely right. That's what we do. We are, we work for the people. We were not elected to listen to insults. We were not elected to be disrespected. We were, so we are here, we are committed council. I know I am. I consider myself committed to this community. But again, the same thing sometimes we are, we ask to receive when we are not, but we are not willing to give. So if at some point anybody felt that this council, to sound the person of the council, that they were offended or disrespected, that was moving. that they were accredited or disrespected, that was not the intention. But again, when it's time to be clear, sometimes we have to just, as a child, right? When you have to tell a child something, sometimes they're very anxious and they're upset. So you have to try to calm down. But it's not the intention of this council to disrespect the community, and I know for a fact that the community respects this council, and it should be that way. It is okay to agree to disagree in a respectful manner. And that's something that we had, that same message had been said here many a time, not just by me, but past presidents and so forth. So if that's, you feel that that's not what is happening, you feel free to talk to me. I'm on one, I'm going to have that discussion. But the same thing that you've been asking as a community, we have to respect also, we have to give it back. We're not here to take insults from anybody.
Give respect, you get respect.
So at this time, I would like to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Satorah Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson? Council President?